Okay, convene in the quorum and call to order, that's all backwards. I call to order this meeting, the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in a regular session on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, in the boardroom of the administration building, 3920 Mickey Gilly Boulevard, Pasadena, Texas at 5:31 PM. Welcome. Board members present, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Crystal Davila, Ms. Paola Gonzalez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, and myself, K.C. Phelan. Board members absent, Ms. Vicky Morgan. Let the record indicate that the quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation this evening will be given by Ms. Gonzalez, and the pledge is by Ms. Sullivan. If you'll please stand.
Right. God, thank you for today. Thank you for this cooler weather, and just for reminding us of your goodness and mercy every day. I pray that you be with us, that you be with us as we make decisions for students and teachers and everyone across the district. I pray that you help us to make wise decisions and continue to lead us and guide us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and
Public comments, according to policy BED Local, related to items on the open session portion of the agenda, 30-minute allotment, there are no public comments at this time. We will adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM. Reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM takes us to the discussion of the district's rating on the state financial integrity rating system for Texas First. Ms. Tamika Alfred Stevens.
Good evening, President Phelan, Board of Trustees, Dr. Powell, community members. This evening, I will be presenting the results of the district's annual school first report. During this public hearing, I will share the district's overall performance rating as scored on the 21 indicators that we have been evaluated on. And since this is a public hearing, at the conclusion of the presentation, there will be an opportunity to provide comments, and of course, answer any questions that any of the trustees may have. Let me begin by first giving a brief overview first, as well as provide some background information about what it actually entails. So FIRST stands for the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, and this annual financial accountability rating is produced by the Texas Education Agency on information we have provided to them via PMS reporting and through our annual financial reports. Again, this report measures 21 indicators, and it measures the district's financial performance and solvency. We are required by law to share the results for the past two years, and that's what I'm going to be communicating to you this evening. Additionally, this report provides information regarding reimbursements that have been provided to the superintendent and the school board, as well as information on any business transactions or gifts or outside compensation that have been received, if any. So keeping in mind, the 2024 rating that I'm about to share is based on data from the 22-23 fiscal year, and the 2023 rating is based on data from the 21-22 school year. Now, the results of this performance for the last two years, again, is what I'm going to share, but I'm going to start with the best news, of course. And that news is that, once again, we've reached a superior achievement, which is an A, that is the highest rating. A school district can earn, in fact, we scored 98 out of 100 possible points, which is an increase of four points in comparison to last year's score. So I'm going to walk us through these indicators now. When you look at these first four indicators, you'll see here that we met the criteria as stated, but these first four indicators are especially important because an answer to of no on any four of these indicators would could mean that we actually fail school first, or it reduces the maximum number of points that we are allowed to receive. So as you can see here in the last two years, we have met those critical indicators. The next two indicators are a simple yes or no as well, and if you'll see here, indicator five was actually not scored last year. In fact, it has not been scored in a few, in a number of years. It was actually scored this year, and of course, we met the criteria. Indicators seven through 10 are based on points, and the maximum of points that we can receive are 10. And you can see here, as I stated earlier, we've increased our score in comparison to last year. Indicator seven specifically, we earned two additional points, reaching the maximum up to 10 points. And indicator eight, we earned two additional points, so we went from six points to eight points there. Indicators 11 through 15, we earned the maximum points allowable on each one, and you'll note here as well that indicator 14 has previously not been scored. It was scored this year, and we did earn the maximum points that are allowable. Indicators 16 and 17 are both either a pass or a fail, and we passed both of those indicators. And again, failure on each of, either of these indicators would reduce the maximum points that we could earn. Indicators 18 and 19 are both point-based. You can see here that we earned the maximum points allowable there, and also on indicators 20 and 21, we met the criteria. The school first report also includes required disclosures, so the district must disclose any gifts received from vendors over $250 in any other business transaction between a board member or the superintendent. Additionally, we must provide information related to the superintendent's income, and the superintendent's contract is available in this report. We're also required to show reimbursements that board members and the superintendent has received, and the reimbursements that I'll show here in a moment are pretty much all based on registration fees and travel to conduct official district business. And finally, our school first report also includes additional information to further display financial transparency. We've included our tax collection rate, our cash management procedures, and our budget planning, and other financial allocations that are provided. And this information is also available on the district's website. You'll see noted here on the screen. And in addition to that information being on the website, we've also provided our check registers, our adopted budgets, and all of our financial reports for the last 10 years. At this time, I'll pause and answer any questions that you may have regarding our school first Or comments.
This is from the board and from the public, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I'll open up to any of the board members, questions?
Wonderful. Very good.
And the public, you're all welcome to speak.
Any questions or comments from the public? Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Takes us to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel section.
Mr. President, I move that we approve it on item A.
Motion by Ms. Gonzalez, second by Mr. Fernandez. Is there any discussion? You know, I was gonna, hold on. I was gonna say, I hate it when you pick out the perfect outfit, you think you're gonna be great, you show up, and everybody else is dressed just like you.
So sorry.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so I'd like to introduce Mr. Stephen Friend. I don't know if he brought enough of a crowd. I mean, I'm not sure. Mr. Stephen Friend has been approved for the position of principal at Pasadena High School, so congratulations. Who did you bring with you tonight?
He raised me. Good job, mom. And of course, I want to say something to the people who came here supporting this at test.
Congratulations. I know Ms. Gomez is here, you know, those are some big shoes to fill, which I think you're probably gonna be able to do it, but she's here, and we love her to death, and we hate to see her go, but congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez.
And now, the second best part of this, you can stay if you want to, but you don't have to. We will let y'all sneak out.
But take your noise maker with you.
But make all your noise on the way out. Sounds good.
I like it at 20 and 30, not at 30.
Dr. Powell, graduate of Pasadena High School, kicks out Pasadena High School people.
Guess my ear is ringing.
What?
Yeah, exactly.
Really?
Y'all don't know this, but I had April Shannon Rogers.
Pretty loud for that little, you know...
Something in my ear today, because I thought I had something rolling around in there, a camera, and she stuck it in my ear.
Wearing the colors, that's great.
And she said, no, there's fluid, so she made me hold my nose.
I'm hoping they already had those.
And then the crinkling and the noise. There's fluid in my ear. But she had like my ear on, I was like, oh my god. Are you looking at that? Gross.
Was there, was there light on the other side?
I mean...
I kid, I kid. We gotta get our shots in now. Okay. Outstanding. We're gonna move on to the certified personnel section, which is for information only, the support personnel, which is also for information only, and the discussion with the Texas Association of School Boards Consultant regarding superintendent search process and search schedule calendar. Dr., say it again?
Kazanis.
Kazanis, yes, sir, if you would, please.
Well, good evening, board of members and community members. My name is George Kazanis, and I am with the Texas Association of School Boards. The school board had hired executive search services to conduct the search to fill big shoes of Dr. Powell. This is gonna be a tough job for me to do, how much she's beloved in this community, but we're up to the task, and I've been visiting with the board members, and I just wanted to share overall our planning meeting and guideline that's ahead of us for the superintendent search for Pasadena ISD. So after tonight, I'll be visiting with the district and working with the communication department, as well as district staff, to establish some key dates. And the key dates are for community forums and community input sessions. Your Board of Trustees has requested those, and we're going to be out in the community, hopefully in December, maybe first of January, in order to gather input from various stakeholders regarding the next superintendent of Pasadena. We ask general questions, for example, regarding things that are, that you want to be sure are retained in your district, that are going well in the district. We also like to talk about and hear some upcoming challenges, some opportunities for the district, and of course, we want to talk specifically about the next superintendent in terms of the profile, developing, helping us develop what professional characteristics are most important, as well as then finally, what personal characteristics that you'd like to see in your next superintendent. So we'll be gathering all of that information with face-to-face type of gatherings. We're getting input, I'm getting input from the board of specific folks to invite. We're looking at different, for example, feeder patterns possibly being in the community where our parents and stakeholders live, in order to hear from them. But of course, we will always have an online presence. We will be launching soon off the Pasadena ISD's website, an online survey, so that all stakeholders have the opportunity to participate. So all of this information, you're asking, what is it for? This information is to inform the board. It helps the board, we work for the board, and it helps the school board then determine what, and hear from the community, what they're looking for in their next superintendent. It helps build the profile of the next superintendent. Got some loud cheers still going around. As a Baylor Bear, I kinda like that green. I do love the green color, but, because I live in the Waco area, but congratulations to your new principal. What a wonderful welcome for him. Where was I? So we're talking about what this profile is all about. So this profile certainly helps the board, again, develop that, and helps in terms of how we go about as the recruiters for the position. So we learn more as well, it's both beneficial to your consulting team, as well as to the board in this particular process, because we're learning more about Pasadena, the community, the schools, the people, what's most important to all of you. After we gather that information, though, it helps the board also look at the candidates themselves when we're reviewing those, in order to select the ones that we will ask to come into interview. It also helps specifically with questioning, things to probe, to learn more about the candidates as well, see if they are a good match for this particular district. So that's a lot, and we will prepare that and be able to present that to the board toward the second week or so of January. Our application deadline, we have agreed, would be, excuse me, January the 27th, so we're looking to keep this application period open. It's already been posted, we already have candidates interested in the position, already have candidates starting or 100% complete, working very really hard on their applications for this position, but we'll keep that open and do our role to recruit and call and tap shoulders and things of that nature regarding candidate pool for the board. After that date, when the application closes, I'll come back, and we will review applications. The board will be in closed session at that particular juncture of the process, and we will select, it's up to the board, the number that they choose to interview, the only official action the board will take is the actual number, their motion. Of course, remember, the board knows this, but to the community, this is a confidential process throughout, and so there won't be any names provided until the lone finalist is named here in the district. But we're also then looking at conducting interviews, initial interviews, the board is in the middle of February or so, so we'll have that process. The board has adopted a process of having an initial interview, and then having a second round of interviews. So the board has chosen to vet the candidates very well, have that first round, if you will, of candidates, and select some finalists from there, from that particular juncture of the process, and then bring them back. Our second round is much more informal, it's an opportunity for the board possibly to meet candidate families, as well as a reception for the candidate and the family, get to know them better, and then, of course, spend much more time with the candidate to see again if they are that perfect fit for Pasadena ISD. But throughout all of this, once they have, we call it a person of interest, the board may even do a site visit, may even conduct a site visit to this person's district, this individual's district, to see how that individual is perceived in their, in their home communities, before making their final decision to name a lone finalist. And we're looking at naming a lone finalist around the end of the first week there of March, and state law requires a 21-day waiting period, and so remember, it's a two-step process. This is Mickey Gilly Drive, so I guess we can talk about two steps, two-step dancing.
Well done, well done.
I couldn't resist, I'm sorry. And I'm sure you hear that all the time. And so the first step of the process is to name that lone finalist, and so that is when then all of you in the community can do their own Google searching, if you will, and find out all you want about the candidate, but the, trust me, the board and TASB, the search consultants, have vetted the candidates as well. There's a 21-day state law waiting period, and then during that time, they'll work with general counsel, finalize contract, and then 21 days later, the vote to hire will occur. So the end goal of all of this is to complete the process by the end of March. Questions? Board members, any questions along the process?
We do appreciate your help and guidance very much.
You're welcome, Ms. Sullivan, you bet.
We have been super impressed, so continue the good work.
Thank you, thank you. Truly, again, I'll just state this, it's an honor, I appreciate the opportunity to work with Pasadena ISD. As I've kind of fumbled at first to say, it's really our big shoes to fill. Dr. Powell, congratulations to you and all the work you've done for this district, it's so well-respected, but truly, I'm excited about the opportunity to work in this community, and the board's commitment to the process, and your next leader of Pasadena ISD. So thank you so very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Item number five, consideration possible approval of the renewal of the Onsite Clinic CSP number 20P-032LP for a cost of $792,623 to be paid through the Health Fund.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the renewal of the Employee Assistance Program, EAP, CSP number 2020P-050LP for a cost of $90,780.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Sullivan.
Approximately how many employees utilize this program?
Want to go to the microphone?
Oh, sir.
The month of October, we had about 159 that were engaged, either online or going through getting the counseling pieces, the resources that are offered through the program.
And this 159, does that advance on to the next month?
It is. Last year, we had about 560-some-odd people that each quarter were engaged in the platform, whether they were utilizing financial resources, counseling resources, relationship resources, and so we're finishing up the last quarter of the year.
And how are the employees made aware that this service is available to them?
So we have it on our website in our benefits section, and then we've been utilizing a lot of the resources, we have free webinars that we've been offering each month, and so we do an email blast, and then we have it posted on our HR website.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the renewal of medical and prescription stop-loss coverage self-funded healthcare plan, CSP number 23P-008LL to Aetna Life Insurance Company for a cost of $2,970,994 to be paid through the Health Fund. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of award for self-funded healthcare plan, ASO Medical Product Services, CSP number 21P-016LP to Aetna Life Insurance Company for a cost of $1,765,874 for fiscal year 2025.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to the education section. Grants Department Spotlight, presented by Ms. Olivia Smith Daughtry.
The lady that we couldn't do without.
Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing us a little bit of time to talk about the work of our department. There we go. So the mission of our department is to be the central source in supporting the district's needs through seeking and applying for external funding and providing compliance assistance for awarded grants. So just a few quick facts about our department. We were established in 2004, and it was a department of two people. It was a grant writer and a secretary, and now we've doubled. So now we have an executive director of grants, we have a secretary, but we also have a grants compliance coordinator, and that position is to help us, once we get the grants, to actually implement what we wrote. And we also have a grants coordinator that works on the pre-award side, that helps people across the district actually develop the proposals that we submit. And so since 2004, we have received $143,419,260 for Pasadena Independent Schools. That, we work with DonorsChoose.org, and we've been working with them, well, we've been tracking the data since 2017, and we have received over 3,000 funded projects that are worth about $2 million. And so we, our teachers are receiving things such as the little markers, the little dot markers for the kindergartners, and we've, we also receive the, what is it, for the CTHS, the books for engineering. And so through this Donors Choose, it is a way that is a crowdfunding source, and they connect the public with K through 12 public schools to add more resources to our teachers. It was a great partnership. And so now, looking at 23-24, our most recent fully completed year, we brought in almost $5 million, and of that $5 million, for those applications that were over $5,000, we had a 75% win rate or award rate, so we're very proud of that. And since August, we have brought in 2.6 million into the district. We are still out there working for kids. So all of these dollar amounts really mean something when you see what they support, and they support these incredible programs that range from after-school programs, extra counselors for our elementaries and intermediates, through our school-based mental health, equipment for our police department, and the list goes on and on. And this is just a list of some of the things that grants fund in the district. There are funders who we love. They range from Harris County Department of Education, the Department of Education, the like US Department of Education, the Department of Justice, and then we even have local partners like Houston-Galveston Area Council, as well as Spark Park, and kaboom. So a lot of different people fund our, fund our schools. Now, as we look ahead for this year, we're, of course, we're gonna continue to research and identify different funding opportunities, because we want to make sure that any money that we go after is a good fit for the district. I say often, not all money is good money, and so we want to be smart about it, and we want to make sure we're just not chasing dollars. We also want to assist teachers in securing more classroom grants, so we want to continue that partnership with Donors Choose, as well as introduce opportunities or increase the applications for opportunities like Fund for Teachers, which is an opportunity during the summer that teachers can apply for, and they can experience things across the world in Peru, or it could be in Massachusetts, wherever, and they can bring it back to their classroom for the next year. So we want to increase those opportunities, because those are incredible ways to, for professional development. It's like hands-on professional development. Then, of course, we want to keep the funders happy. We definitely want to keep them happy, because when they're happy, they keep funding us. So we want to ensure that we have strong compliance in place, and that each grant manager is spending the money as they should. And last, we want to make sure that we're also refining any internal processes so that district-wide people fall in love with grants. Sometimes, when you say grants, people are like, oh, no, but we don't want that to happen, so we're gonna continue to make... So we're going to continue to make it a smooth process to write a grant, as well as to implement And there's no way all of the great things I've already mentioned could happen without this team. Team, can you please stand? About doing great things for kids, and so I just can't say enough about them. And we have two fairly new members, but they are just as passionate about doing great things for the district. Finally, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the support. Thank you to the board. Thank you to Dr. Powell. Thank you to the administration for your support, because what I find is not a lot of people have grants departments or the size of a grants department that we have, but y'all have supported us for many years, and I think, I know that the kids have benefited. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Olivia.
Thank you, ladies.
Olivia and her group, I don't think unless you've been involved in trying to apply for a grant through a foundation or something else, do you realize how much information that you have to provide to even get to first base? It's a difficult, very difficult job, and I've been part of one, so I've, I've seen all the things that you have to do, and they do this on a daily basis, and you guys are super people. That's all I got to say. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. We greatly appreciate your work. Anybody else?
It's almost every board meeting that we get to celebrate one of your grants, so we...
Thank you. All right. Consideration possible approval of a second interlocal agreement between the Pasadena Independent School District and Texas Women's University for Internship and Externship with no financial implications for additional students.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan? Second by Ms. Davila? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the 2024-2025 satellite site contract for the Region Four Regional Day School Program for the deaf in the amount of $1,670,860 to be paid with local funds. Motion by Mr. Fernandez. Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the 2024-2025 Twenty First Century Community Learning Centers Cycle 12 Year Two Continuation Grant Award in the amount of $2 million. Motion by Mr. Kendrick? Second by Ms. Sullivan? Any discussion? See, there y'all are again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If y'all want to sneak out, we'll let you sneak out. She can't stop you.
You got more money coming.
Consideration possible approval of the 2024-2025 Harris County Department of Education Case for Kids Partnership Grant Award for Frager Elementary in the amount of $30,000 and the corresponding interlocal agreement. Motion by Mr. Fernandez. Second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the, of two additional support council positions for the School-Based Mental Health Service Grant. Motion by Mr. Fernandez. Second by Ms. Gonzalez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to the student section, which is for information only. Takes us to the financial section. Considerational possible approval of budget amendments for October 2024.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick. Second by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Operations section. Consideration possible approval of the design development phase for the new softball complex replacement project. Presentation by Mr. Roger Brownlow, CRE8, Create Architects.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Appreciate the board allowing us to make this. Better? Okay. Take into this. Let me know if I get off track a little bit. We made the schematic design presentation last January, addressing, working on the project. As you may remember, the site, and I'm sure you're very well aware of it, the site is a former administration building. One thing I guess you know, that the building has been demolished, the site has been stripped, paving removed, et cetera, but there has been development of the site, getting ready in preparation for construction. One positive effect that occurred is the district has bought the two parcels of land, so allowing us to build, have the whole block there to build our project on. So I think something was pointed out before by Mr. Kendrick, we're trying to get 10 pounds out of a 5-pound bag, so now I think we've got an 8-pound bag to work with. We appreciate the, the effort on the, on the district to purchase that land. The concept and program for the project has not changed in schematic. We're still looking at three fields, one major field in the center, at the center of the site labeled Play Field 1, and the two adjacent fields labeled Play Field 3. The main field will have seating for 1,000 spectators. The two adjacent fields will have seating for 500 each, so we'll have a total of 500 seats, project stadium on this site. The layout of the site has not changed. We're still providing public parking on the south side of the site. We have two auxiliary parking lots on the north side of the site, coming off of Dallas Street. I think we have, those auxiliary parking spaces will also serve as the, the team bus drop-off and pickup, and I think we've resolved the problem that Mr. Fernandez pointed out to us last time, and that we, we had the buses lined up. If someone, a team went out and got on the bus, they were stuck there till the, till the games were over. So we resolved that, I think, with providing more space, double lanes, so a bus can come and, come and go without waiting in line for the other buses. The, the, the parking area will, will serve, like I say, parking for the public. You'll enter the complex through an entrance, and then opening into a, the plaza area, which then provides adjacency and access to all the amenities that are provided in the, in the plaza. I'll enlarge this plan a little bit, show you what, what, what that entails. We have the public restrooms, concession, the officials' dressing room, as well as some landscape areas for seating and things of that nature. You'll have access to all of the stadium seating. They will all be with ramps and all the necessary features for accessibility. So we've gone from the plans, let me give you a little bit aerial view. This is a view, if you're hovering over Cherry Brook Lane, looking at the, at the site from the, from the south, you'll see the, the entry structure with the entry gates going into the plaza area. Then on, you'll see the three fields located on the, adjacent to the, to the main. One of the requirements, I guess, in discussing the, uh, planning and approval by the city of Pasadena, if you approve the parking on the, on the site, however, there, there will be a requirement that there will be no parking on the side streets. So we'll be having perimeter signage around the perimeter of the site with the no parking signs, so I think that was... Not sure it's really a concession. I don't think we planned for it anyway. The other thing, there will be no drive access from Raspberry Lane as well, because that's the residential. This would be another view, then, from the north side of the site on Dallas Street. Gives you a pretty good idea of the relationship with the field. You see, each field will have, will be a fenced field. There'll also be safety netting on the site to provide protection from fly balls from the, for the adjacent fields, and also safety netting on Strawberry Road to keep those fly balls from getting out of causing mishap out there. This gives an idea of the, the athletic lighting that'll be provided on the fields. That lighting will have cutoff lenses on it to prevent any spillage off the field under the, under the adjacent area. Right in the center, there is a press box elevated on top of the stadium. At the lower level, ground level, that, that area will also serve as the, the maintenance equipment storage area. This is a view, kind of, it from the parking lot, looking towards the main entry. Little bit closer view of the main entry, you see the, the gated access, the covered canopy that spans between the two building structures that provide coverage. This is how it would look when you're standing inside of the plaza. You, you have access to the public areas, restrooms, concession. You'll see on the wall, on the, on the right-hand side, the opportunity for graphics to kind of promote and develop the theme for sports and activities and softball. Schedule, we're, as I say, we're, tonight, we're presenting the design development. We are scheduled to complete the construction documents in mid-January. At that point, we will prepare the plans, submit them to the city of Pasadena for permitting, and at that point, we'll go through the procurement process, put it out for bids, select contractors, evaluate the contractors, and make a recommendation to the board in the, I believe it was the April board meeting for approval and award of a contract, with construction to commence shortly after that. We're allowing one year for construction, starting May 5, 2025, with anticipated completion in May. We're still working with the construction budget of $17,700,000. We're, we're monitoring that as we go and progress and develop the, and the construction Well, that brings us to the finale. We certainly thank the board and appreciate the, our opportunity to present this. We also think we want to extend our thanks to Hertel Jasso, Donna Branch, always Kevin and Shawna. We appreciate their help, their leadership, guiding us through this project and giving what, providing what the district is expecting. We certainly appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Sullivan?
It'll be steel structure. It'll be a manufactured, prefabricated components, pretty typical on most, most stadiums.
I have a question.
Ms. Gonzalez.
So about 2,000 seats, that's correct?
That's correct.
And we have only parking for about 350 vehicles. Do you anticipate that being a problem?
We've, we've discussed that with the city of Pasadena at this point. They have raised no objection. It turns out, the city of Pasadena has not, does not have a parking ordinance that really addresses parking for sports venues like this, so... We said this, we showed them this parking layout and the, and the lighting is pretty much said to them, really, as you can see, we've utilized every square inch of this site for parking, so as of right now, that city does not seem to be an issue.
But it provides more parking than we had at the old site.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yeah, so you're working with Mr. Jasso on like turf and things like that, because I know you've always... ...visiting all of those benefits.
Absolutely, and like I say, we've been, we will, we'll, during the bidding process, we'll probably have several manufacturers listed, but we'll set them up to where they could be alternate bids, where we can evaluate. It's typical of Create, I don't know how you, like you said, the eight pounds in the 10-pound bag with this many parking places. That's phenomenal, Roger, and it's a beautiful facility. It is a little tight, but yes, I think, I think, I think it works. We're satisfied with the layout of the site. I think we were able to make it work.
Beautiful job. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I had one question in terms of the lighting. I know that was a concern that was brought to me a couple of times from people, because it's next to a neighborhood. Can you talk about the lighting that you're using?
Well, as I said, I said in your presentation, the lighting, the sports lighting, field lighting, will have lenses and deflectors on it to where we can cut off the light so that it does not spill over outside of the... I think there's actually code requirements against that.
Yeah, because if you see the, the new lighting, you know, even our stadium, it's, it's straightened out.
It's very focused. Yes, it is.
Any others, any other discussion? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 013, for the 2022 Bond CTE Classroom and Lab Improvements Project at Sam Reeburn High School in the credited amount of $3,931.91.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 014, for the 2022 Bond CTE Classroom and Lab Improvements Project at Sam Reeburn High School in the amount of $33,830.75.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez. Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the HVAC Testing and Balancing Service Agreement with National Precision Air LLC for the 2022 Bond New Williams Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $66,500.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing MEP Commissioning Service Agreement with McKistery Ascension, say the second word, Ascension LLC for the 2022 Bond New Williams Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $70,000.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick. Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a material testing services agreement with Raba Kissner Inc. for the 2022 Bond New Williams Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $134,725.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number A-025, for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the amount of $39,981.
Don't move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan? Second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I did have a question.
Oh, sorry. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Kevin, that building is really coming along great. Is it going to be big enough? All right. I, I believe you. It's looking good.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any other discussion? I'm sorry. What did I miss? Oh, we already did that? Sorry.
Got the vote.
Sir?
You're good.
Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number A-026, for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the credited amount of $4,360. Motion by Mr. Fernandez. Second by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number A-032, for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the amount of $49,364. for the 2017 Bond Transportation Center Replacement Project in the amount of $49,364.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Davila? Second by Ms. Sullivan? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 08, for the 2022 Bond New Parks Elementary School Replacement Project in the amount of $53,603. Motion by Mr. Fernandez? Second by Ms. Sullivan? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Final Change Order Number 001 for the 2022 Bond Roof Replacements Package One Project in the credited amount of $5,284.50. Motion by Mr. Fernandez? Second by Ms. Sullivan? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 004, for the 2022 Bond Roof Replacement Package Two Project at Burnett Elementary School in the credited amount of $5,906.53.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick? Second by Ms. Sullivan? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Final Change Order Number 001 for the 2022 Bond Roof Replacements Package Two Project in the credited amount of $378,415.23. Motion by Mr. Fernandez? Second by Ms. Sullivan? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 10, for the 2022 Bond HVAC Replacement Group One, Package One, Project at Frazier Elementary School at Burnett Elementary School in the amount of $29,668.23. Motion by Mr. Fernandez? Second by Ms. Gonzalez? By Ms. Sullivan? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of a non-professional service contract between PISD and the City of Pasadena for summer camp transportation services.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez? Second by Ms. Sullivan? I'm sorry. Ms. Davila? Don't know how you did that. Second by Ms. Sullivan? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval to restructure the bond program management team to meet the needs of the district. Reclassification of the Bond Project Controls Manager to Bond Program Manager, Data Governance and Reporting EO6 position to be paid by the Bond Program Management Budget.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick and second by Ms. Sullivan? Discussion?
So, board members, you approved this in a different form a couple of months ago, and we reevaluated it for even a further savings, still paid for by the Bond Program Management Fund, but I just kind of wanted to do a little history lesson there.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consideration possible approval of the conveyance of a storm sewer easement location at the northeast property line of the maintenance, operations, and warehouse facility adjacent to South Shaver Street.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan? Second by Ms. Davila? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Change Order Number 001 for the 2022 Bond Safety and Security Project in the amount of $1,220,000.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick? Second by Ms. Sullivan? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us to the construction updates, which is for information only. Moving on to the miscellaneous section. Consideration possible approval of the adoption of a resolution casting votes for candidates of its choice to be appointed to serve on the Board of Directors of the Harris County Central Appraisal District.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
There are names listed in the item that was submitted, but I would like to have those names deleted and the name of Mike Sullivan approved. Mr. Sullivan is a past City of the Council Houston member and served southeast Harris County. He is well familiar with our school district, with our surrounding areas in our school district, and has been active in civic and community events for our district. The other individuals that was presented, all are of the North Harris County area, and I feel that it's important that we have someone on the appraisal board that does represent our area and especially our school district. And he's a former school board member also.
Yes, ma'am.
So trustee Sullivan, is that a motion to
Yes.
allocate the 90 votes to, I think you said, Mr. Sullivan and adopt a resolution related to that. Is that a motion?
Yes.
So I'm to understand it's, the motion is for all the votes to go to Mr. Sullivan and the rest to be stricken off, or taken off the resolution?
That's my understanding of her motion.
Do I have a second? So we have a second by Mr. Fernandez? Discussion, Ms. Gonzalez?
So although I know that Mr. Sullivan is an excellent candidate for this, he has Harris County, like, support in other areas where he is getting votes. He is not a current sitting board member, and so one of the things to consider is that to have a school board trustee voice on this board is important. And so I would suggest picking one name from the ones that we have here. And we know Martina Lamont Dixon to be a very strong advocate for public education in the greater Houston area, although they are not on this side of town, and I understand that, and they still would be an advocate and a voice for public schools. And so that would be my suggestion. And also to not dilute the vote so that we ensure we get a public school trustee on this board.
Any other discussion?
I would recommend that we amend that to have someone that is a current sitting board member on a school district. My suggestion would be Martina Lamont Dixon. Martina Lamont Dixon, one of the three names that was mentioned on the original.
So as I understand it right now, the motion on the floor is for Mr. Sullivan to get all 90 votes, correct? And I have a second. We need to vote on that.
Well, actually, if I heard correctly, there was a motion to amend
Okay.
that motion, but you didn't identify trustee how the votes would be allocated, even though you stated that, so you'll have to, is your motion to amend to replace Mr. Sullivan with the trustee member that you mentioned and apply all 90 votes?
It could be, unless we have to vote first on the other. You tell me.
Actually, no. No, there's a motion on the table, but there's a motion to amend that.
Right.
You have to actually take action on the amendment.
Okay.
And then you proceed to the original motion.
Gotcha. So do I have
In other words
So, Ms. Gonzalez?
But there have to be a second.
I got you. Ms. Gonzalez, first motion. Do I have a second motion for Ms. Gonzalez's motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila? Which brings us back to
Well, actually, you have a motion to amend on the table.
Right.
Which you'll need to take action on, and then depending on that vote, it will return to the original motion
Gotcha.
by trustee Sullivan.
So all in favor of Ms. Gonzalez's motion to amend? All in favor?
Aye.
So that's two? Any opposed? One, two?
Three?
Three, sorry. Three?
So the motion to amend fails, Mr. President?
Correct.
And now you would proceed to the original motion?
Back to Ms. Sullivan's motion. So on the motion to have allocated all 90 votes to Mr. Sullivan and strike the rest of the names from the list, correct? And Ms. Sullivan made the first motion, Mr. Fernandez made the second. Do I, all in favor?
Yes.
One, two, three?
Yeah, if you'll state the vote number for the record.
Yes, three yeses. Any opposed? Who knows? Motion fails? Or
Motion fails. Did you say it was three, three?
Three, two.
Three, two, then the motion passes. Did you say three, you say three in favor and two against?
Yes, three in favor, two against.
Then the motion prevails. Motion passes.
Motion passes. So for clarification reasons
Hold on one second, Mr. President?
Yes.
We didn't hear your vote, Mr. President.
I did not vote.
It was Mr. Kendrick, Mr. Fernandez, and myself, the three of us.
So are you, those are the three, and then the two who were opposed?
Yes, sir.
But you have to, are you abstaining?
Yes, I am.
Okay, just needed to, for the record, the three members voted in favor of the motion, two opposed, and one abstention.
Yes, sir.
So the motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay, got it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, board. Public comments, according to the BED Local, related to the topics not listed on the agenda. There's a 30-minute allotment. There are no public comments on the agenda. So we're gonna set a date for the regular meeting on Tuesday, January the 21st, 2025. Motion by Mr. Fernandez? Second by Ms. Davila? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned at 8:00 PM.